The City Commission of Rio Grande City, it is Wednesday, February the 12th, 2020, approximately 6:03 PM here in Commission Chambers, 5332 East US Highway 3, Rio Grande City, Texas, Suite A. At this time, we'll have the invocation by Commissioner Jones, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Ramirez.
Father, Heavenly Father, thank you for being able to gather here today to conduct the city business. I ask for you to guide us and make the best decisions for the residents of Rio Grande City. I ask for you to bless those in harm's way and bless all our city employees and continue making, letting us do the right thing for the best residents for Rio Grande City. In all this, I ask for you, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Constitution and the Constitution of which it stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored to testify that the Constitution of the City takes just one statement of God, one and indivisible.
This time, we'll have roll call in finding the quorum.
Yes, Mr. Villarreal.
Here.
Present. Mayor Proterm Garza, absent. Commissioner Flores, absent. Commissioner Ramirez.
Here.
Present. Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Present.
Do you have a quorum?
Yes, we have a quorum.
Item 1C, public forum. Do we have anyone signed up for public forum? Or anybody that would wish to talk in public forum at this time? No? All right. Moving on to item 1D, departmental reports. Mayor, we've got, I think, Mr. Cruz, you got some information for us?
Dude.
You want to talk about TCQ coming by and what you've been working on?
Well, good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Commissioners.
It's been a long day. Just got back from Laredo. We were appointed, well, I was appointed as a representative to serve this on this, on the board for the South Texas Food Bank. Because of the work that we've done these last couple of months and the relationship we established, obviously with some of the relationships I had from my days at precinct four in Hidalgo County, and now some of the representatives they have over here, they appointed us to the South Texas Food Bank. What that means is now we have a representative who works for the city that is going to be attending those meetings, and that's going to help bring more opportunities for the city, more chances of funding. I know Mr. Perez had already met with them about possibly creating a pantry for the city. So it's a pretty exciting time, obviously, for us to be able to have a voice. The meetings are once a month, so we'll be attending those meetings and hopefully bringing back some positive news and opportunities for the city.
We've had three of them, right? How many have we had?
Four.
Four of them?
Yeah.
And each one was a close to...
Each one gets a little bit bigger, yeah. And we just, I just found out today that they want to have another one on the 27th. That's unofficial, because they don't like to advertise it until the day before, but, so we'll be having another one.
But each one of them was 35 tons or 40, almost 40 tons?
Thirty-five thousand, yeah. Thirty-five thousand pounds or something like, I don't have the exact number, so I don't, I don't want to lie to you, but what they were happy to see is that every month, the numbers get bigger and bigger, and what they were more impressed with, with, that they don't have everywhere else, is how our employees get involved. Every time they come out, our staff, and I really want to thank Hector from Public Works and our planning director as well, too, because for the great work that they do and having their employees come out, along with the PUD, to assist in distributing all this, this food to the community. I know some of the Commissioners make it out when they have an opportunity as well, too. So it's a community event, it's a community thing that we do every month, and they were really excited about that. That's really what drew them to want to continue working with us, is the fact that we're so involved as well, too. We did have TCQ come by a few weeks ago. We're working on finalizing a report. A lot of the things that they had initially cited us for were things that were minimal things, so we're wrapping those things up. They gave us a grace period to kind of get those things resolved before it goes officially on a...
On a report?
On a report. So actually, Mr. Perez had a conversation with them today, this afternoon, so they're working with us. I think the biggest thing is that they see that we're, that the effort is there in trying to get a lot of these things done. I think the thing that we have in regards to the tank, that's actually an item, so I'll save that for then, but other than that, that's pretty much all I have at this point.
Were those reports, including the departmentary reports, the TCQ reports?
No, sir.
I don't think I see them there.
No.
Not yet, because...
We're still not finalizing them.
We haven't finalized the responses.
Yeah. I don't want to give you something that's not done or not completed, Commissioner.
First of all, they owe us the finding. First of all, they give us an opportunity to fix a lot of these things before they formalize the report. Then they formalize the report, when they, we get the report, then we'll provide it to you and say, okay, this is what they came back with, and this is what we're going back to them with. So we have a plan of action.
We, we thought they would have that to us by, by now, but they're still on their end, so we're not going to...
I would like to see them, because I know in the past they have not been included in the reports, Mr. Perez, so I would like to try out to include them from now on.
Okay.
Actually, as soon as I get the reports, I can personally have them sent out to you guys.
You can email it to us.
Yeah, to each Commissioner, that's not an issue at all.
And just to address any findings that we have, I know we have a good way to address it before, I guess it becomes an actual finding.
Yeah.
And we seem to be doing a very good job of keeping up with it. However, there's always improvement, right?
Of course.
There's always room for improvement, so definitely whatever we can do to, to address any of those needs immediately, you know, whatever we need to do on our end to make sure that, that we address all the needs, especially TCQ, any type of finding, to make sure that...
I, I think you, you said exactly what, what happened and what I felt in this last meeting, Mayor. A lot of the issues that were, that were originally alleged and were cited on, prior to me coming into, to this position, we, we have addressed and we've tried to focus on making sure that we close them out. But like you said, there's always something new, always something, you know, get a different set of eyes and they'll find something else. But I accepted that challenge, and I said, that's great, because we want to try to be as close to perfect as possible. Obviously, being perfect is pretty hard, but every time they find something, the guys rose to the challenge and say, okay, we'll get it fixed, we'll do this, we'll do that. So all that credit goes to our staff, because literally the next day, they were at it, making sure all those things were resolved. So as soon as we get the official one, we'll submit what we have, which we pretty much know what it is at this point, but we just needed an official writing. We'll submit it back and then we'll go from there.
There was a, I addressed an issue with them that I, that we as a city had, and one of the things I ran into several times with them, and I have the emails I provided to them, we were not able to get updates from them as to what the status of all their find, previous findings were, meaning we've submitted to them stuff back, and I could never get a status as to was it resolved or not. And so their call today was to address that. So now they're starting to communicate more, and communication's opened up a lot better. But we are both agreeing, as a city and the organization, to make sure that we keep those lines of communication open, because we were not, we were submitting the information back to them, but we're not getting updates to verify or to verify that we're done with that outstanding obligation that we had with them. And so now we're making an extra effort to make sure we communicate more often, even before they submit to us the, the formal findings.
Yeah, they were kind of thrown off, because I had already submitted some stuff to them, and we haven't received the official notice yet or pack yet, but I guess that, I just another reason to just show them how persistent we want to be in closing these things out, so.
And really, that's the key, you know, the persistence, to make sure that we're on top of it, we're willing to do all these things, what we need to do. And as long as they get that perspective, then, then we're in the right, should I say, train of thought here, so.
Yes, sir.
And on the other note, thank you for being a member of the South Texas Food Bank. Obviously, were you looking at a, what is it, 150,000 pounds of food that had been distributed? If that's accurate?
I think last...
Approximately 150,000 pounds of food over the last four visits that they've had. I mean, obviously, that is great for the community, and I'm glad that we're doing that, so thank you for being part of that, and I'm sure we're going to continue to foster that relationship with them. So I guess a food, a food bank of the city would be some, food pantry at some point.
It's very preliminary, we're just exploring.
Right, I mean, at this time, we're exploring, but obviously, it's a good avenue to start taking, and of course, we welcome them to keep coming.
Well, and that's the biggest thing, like I said, Mayor, and I don't want to drag, but like, that's the biggest thing that, that attracted them to us, was the fact that the city is so involved. Usually, when they go to these, these sites, it's, they have to man them themselves, but the fact that we have, you know, all our departments going out there, employees showing up, helping out, that, that's what really showed them, you know, hey, we want to continue this relationship, and we want it to grow, so hopefully, good things to come, so thank you.
I know I keep hearing the, whenever I get asked about that is, can you let me know several weeks in advance? I'm sorry.
We'll probably have cars out here the next day.
I can prepare my car. Sorry, I can't do that. But I know, it's just, there's a need, and obviously, that need, to satisfy some of that need, you know, bodes well for the community, so.
What I see, Mayor, every week that, every time that we have it, you know, the staff's doing a better job, you know, on, on the drive to wise, you know, where the cars are, you know.
Getting better at it.
Getting better at it, you know, we're getting better at it, you know, because...
They have it down to a science now.
You know, you kind of see the people going, hasta mira uno que da la vuelta de vuelta, for seconds, you know, but, you know, I mean, the staff's doing an excellent job, you know, distributing, and well organized. The important thing with them is that it's been a managed growth of the amount of food that they're giving out, instead of announcing it too early and it becomes unmanageable and people go home without. So pretty much every time, they've been able to supply everybody that lines up because of the way they've been communicating the information. If you do it too far in advance, you'd be surprised, you know, you might be outnumbered very quickly.
Well, and the, on the day of the, of the distribution, you see the cars lined up.
By 7:00 AM.
By 7:00 AM.
Yes.
Which, again, as long as we continue to make a dent in that need, bodes well for all the staff and, and all of you, maybe this, this happened, so thank you, sir, appreciate it.
No problem. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. No Commissioner Gasset.
For the record, Ms. Villarreal, your pro temp is here.
Yes, present.
Would you like to give a quick update on the department?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. Quick update on the, on the audit. We're finalizing, we're at the final steps of the audit. The auditor encountered some, I guess, setbacks. I don't know what you call, we, we closed the sanitation department, we moved it into the PUD, so now they have to close all the books for the sanitation and move them into the, into the PUD, so that's a, a little bit far, further behind, but we're still, I guess, in pace to finish by the end of February.
By the end of February?
By the end of February, yeah.
Excellent.
Yeah.
So we're, we're on track for that...
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Still learning. Right, I mean, and obviously, that's going to help us a lot in reference to being able to start talking about the budget for next year and whatnot, and what we can do, so.
Yeah, I think this one's looking pretty promising as well. I think the, the general funds, the fund balance should be going up higher this time around. The PUD is going to take a bit of a hit because of what happened there between the sanitation and the, and the PUD department, but we should still be okay.
Well, we're, we're shooting for a AAA rating down the road, right?
We can get it.
We're working on it.
We're working on it.
Yes, sir.
Nowhere in A-bond rating, but AAA within.
We'll get it.
All right. Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Anyone else? What's in there? Ms. Foltz? I know she always has some wonderful news about our library.
May I ask, Commissioners? We have a, we do have some items for auction soon, and we're going to have our annual book sale at the Stark County Youth Fair. We've got, we started today with our first STC basic computer class, and we have six laptops that we had gotten with a grant, but it was so well received, that we're going to add another class at a different time, so we're going to have two programs going on, one in English and one in Spanish. And also, I don't know if I formally announced it, but we received another grant for the census from the Valley Baptist Legacy Foundation for $52,024. So I am going to reach out to them and invite them perhaps to our March meeting, so that, you know, we can...
So the total is 100 and...
100, over 114,000.
114,000, excellent.
Yes, and we've already started to meet, we've met with Mr. Perez and Ms. Guian and Melinda, and Ashley and I have met, and we're coming up with a marketing plan. Melinda's right now looking, working on a logo that'll include something, you know, for our area. We'll be working on the billboards, we'll start with the library billboard, whatever other billboards we have in town that we could start, and we'll have a, a letter from you to the community. We'll have radio, newspaper, and a lot of other, you know, merchandising things, stickers and of that nature.
And you're hiring, too?
And we are hiring two temporary part-time employees, yes. I'll, I'll get together with Ms. Brown on that, so that as soon as we, as far as I know, the money has not officially arrived.
Okay, but $114,000 for, you know, a great cause, of course, which is our census, making sure everybody gets accounted. So thank you, Ms. Foltz, that goes a long ways, $114,000 to, to secure everybody's accountability.
Right.
Which of course translates to millions of dollars down the road, so thank you.
And I know that the census is, continues to look for temporary part-time employees, and they're starting off like at $18 an hour, so it's good paying jobs for people in our community, so they need to go to census.gov to, to apply online.
By the way, finish that book, American Dirt, and I can see the controversy behind it, this book. Ms. Foltz, can you tell us about that Oprah Club?
Well, yes, we, we, I have not, we, the book is American Dirt. We have a book club of all librarians, so we have a little different perspective from other book clubs. I know the city of McAllen, the library there took a different stance. They did not want to participate in the book club, but they do have that book available to their patrons. It's about a journey of, you know, a mother from Mexico and, and how they, she fed with her child to the United States and the things that they go through. So it's something very, you know, that we see all the time, it's very, the topic is, I guess, on point, and one of the big things was that the author of the book was not Latina, so, you know, does she have the right to, to write, to write that book? And we feel like our job is not to censor books, but we are librarian, I mean, and we're librarians and we have libraries, and, and we can't just fill the library with books that we enjoy reading, so we have to be open to other topics and other authors and, and be more open.
And I, we definitely support that, because like you said, I mean, obviously, in any type of literary work, there's going to be different perspectives, different points of view, and obviously, there'll be some dissension, but the idea is to make sure that it's available and then people will decide.
Right.
And of course, promoting literacy along the way as well.
Yes.
So, I mean, that's, it's a wonderful opportunity to keep promoting literacy, of course.
Yes.
And be engaged in that conversation.
Correct, yes.
But thank you, Ms. Foltz.
And, and we are going to have a conference call with Oprah's creative directors with, she wants to talk with the group, so we're planning that probably next week.
Tell us a secret, she's coming to Rio Grande City, right, Ms. Foltz?
That might be it, that might be it, yes. And, and just briefly, sir, we, we got a mini grant for, to buy some books for Dia del Niño, so we'll, once again, we'll be giving out books April the 30th at the Basilio Verde Park, and we'll have a DJ out there and, and hopefully, a lot of children available. So thank you so much.
But thank you for promoting literacy, again, and thank you. Anyone else? Yep. All right, next, business and orders, item 2, consent agenda. Item A, approval of departmental travel request. Letter B, approval of minutes from previous meetings.
Mayor, on that one, you can only take action on 2A and 2B, there's no action, because we're still drafting the, the minutes, so we won't move them forward.
Okay, so it's time to be...
It will only be 2A.
2A. You have it in your packet, any...
I'll send them over.
Okay, we have motion to approve item 2A, approval of departmental travel request by Commissioner Ramirez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, business and orders, item 3, ordinances. Letter A, second reading and possible action, approving ordinance number 20 dash, or 2020-1, adopting and enacting an update on fees for residential building permits.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners.
Mr. Milan?
This is the second reading for the ordinance due to the new state laws on how we collect for building permits. As the ordinance says, this is only residential permits. We need to collect residential building permits fees based on square footage or other methods, but not on valuation. So we did compare other cities valleywide, and this is comparable to Hidalgo City, and it's going to be at 32 cents per square feet, and again, this is on residential only. Commercial valuation is going to stay the same.
Were you able to review this, Mr. Milan?
We did, and we, we changed based on the recommendations by Mr. Milan, and we did review it.
Okay, at this time...
I'll send them over.
Entertained motion? That motion to, to approve by Commissioner Jones?
I'll send them over.
Second by Commissioner Ramirez. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries next. Thank you, Mr. Milan. The next item is item 4, resolutions. We have item A, discussion and possible action to approve resolution number 2020-3, calling the May 2020 general elections. Item 4A. Conversation on this, Mr. Perez?
Mayor, pretty straightforward. We're scheduled, the election will be held on May 7th, 2020. Pretty standard material, just like the last election, sir.
Yep.
No surprises there. Obviously, you know, we've got Commissioner for place two, Commissioner for place four, and a mayor position.
Okay, we have a, an entertaining motion at this time.
Have we made accommodations for the voting machine?
Yes, we have a contract already drafted. They've assured me the machines are available, and so we have a proposal for whether we have a turnkey approach in having the county folks doing everything for us election-wise, or contracting somebody from Austin to come help us. The cost for the machines is approximately $2,000. This includes a machine that will be able to be taken out.
Vote?
Yes, sir.
Vote, Mr. Milan?
Yes, and it'll include a machine that will be allowing us to go to the vehicles outside, so if you have handicapped folks that cannot walk out of the vehicle, they should be able to take the device to them and vote outside, with assistance, of course.
Okay, do we entertain a motion at this time?
I'll send them over.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ramirez. We have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, item is 4B, discussion and possible action to approve resolution number 2020-4 for the border zone fire grant 50-50 and required matching clause.
Mayor, on that one, you cannot take action, it's the wrong grant that was posted, so it has to be reposted, so at this time...
Table it or no action?
No action.
No action at this time. At this time...
Chief, what are they talking about?
Well, it's, it's a grant, it was a misunderstanding on the name of the grant for, this grant, the actual border zone grant that's going to be presented for the next board meeting.
Okay.
The one that we want to present is a USDA grant, which we'll be presenting as well in the other board meeting.
Okay, but there's no risk of the grant?
No.
Issues or anything?
No.
We're not running any risks?
No.
We can wait for the next meeting, or can it...
They could wait for the next meeting, correct.
Thank you, Chief. So no action on item 4B. Then we have item 5, planning. Letter A, discussion and possible action on preliminary and final approval of amendment number 2 to the amended Empire number 3 subdivision.
Yes, Mayor, as you can see, this subdivision has had a couple of amendments. One of the, first one was, we had a typographical error, it was corrected. The second one, last, to the amended plan was the change of use of the subdivision. It was filed as multi-family, it was converted into single-family homes. They paid all their dues, and last night, it was approved for preliminary and final by the, recommended for approval by the planning and zoning commission.
Planning and zoning.
Yes, sir.
All right. So no other issues at this time of this?
No.
Okay, do we entertain a motion at this time?
I'll send them over.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item 5A by Commissioner Ramirez, second by Commissioner Gasset. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Milan. Next item is 6A. If there's no objection, we'll be discussing this item in executive session, and then come back. Next, item 6B, discussion and possible action to approve change order on Maguire Iron Ink contract.
Mayor, Commissioners, I have Mr. Michael Brook here. Obviously, he's a representative for Maguire. During the renovations of the, the storage tank, there were some unforeseen issues that they came across, and so they're here today to talk about those issues and kind of give you an update of where they are with everything, with this project up to this point. They're currently at the Hidalgo Tank Facility as well, too, so he's going to go and give you an update on that, and I'm going to turn the mic over to him.
Mayor, Council, thank you for seeing us tonight. We have, there's two folders I passed out, the one with the steel binder, some facts, figures on what's going on with the tank, and then there's some photos in the one with the plastic binder. General update, we're about, currently, into February, first week of March, should be finished with the ground storage tank. However, there are some issues with that, we need to discuss tonight and go over, and might as well go into it right now. We, the tank was so, when we did the individual inspection, we looked at it, we could not tell, there were certain things we couldn't see, the floor of the tank and the roof of the tank, because of distance and how it was covered in rust through the lack of maintenance over the last 30 years. Upon sandblasting, we started blasting holes in the side of your tank, and floor of your tank, and then the beams. So we've repaired the floor, we're repairing the sidewalls, but the beams are, need 15 foot of each beam, 43 beams replaced. So we stopped there because of the charges, of the amount of money, the expenditure over our contract, over our cost would be. We went ahead with other repairs. Additionally, if you see additional work completed, we did an interior coating repair. We put an extra coat of zinc on the floor due to the pitting. We pit filled the floor with epoxy after that, and then we hand-rolled the entire interior and exterior of the tank. The interior of the tank, we hand-rolled, they're called holidays in the industry. If you spray on paint, sometimes it won't go into every hole, it'll sort of film over it, so we have to, we had to, we hand-rolled the entire tank, making, so we'd make sure there were no holes, no holidays there, so, and none of this affected the original quote, we didn't come back on or charge, because it was just something we do, because we want the tank to be in the best shape possible, because we're going to take care of it for the next 15 years. Then the exterior coating, we had to, we ended up blast, blushing, brush, blasting the entire exterior, because it was in such rough shape. Extra blast material, two days extra labor to clean up the tank so we could get it, so we could paint it, and then we actually hand-rolled two full coats of acrylic on it, and originally, it was going to be just a clean-off, spot prime and one coat. And if you get into the pictures, you can see some of this. The repairs, we had to seal holes in the tank roof and sidewall and do a tremendous amount of seam welding, because your welds came apart and came off as we sandblasted with the rust. So we spent about $116,500 extra on the tank, and that was not a problem for us, because And that was not a problem for us because we looked at it, we gave the best estimate we could considering the condition the tank was in. But then when we came to the beams, we needed to replace 15 feet of all 43 beams, replace all 43 sidewall clips, and you can see some of the pictures, and seam weld all new beam sections of the sidewalls. This cost, at our cost, is passed straight through as $125,000. That's for material, and that doesn't even include the, basically, the labor we'll have to do. It's just for the materials and then reblasting after we're done, repriming, repainting, re-rolling. So we suggested a payment structure. This is still flexible, but the payment structure is upon completion of this tank, half, and then the rest would be financed over five years within your plan. So we know there'll be discussion there. I want to direct your attention, if you would, to the plastic binded one I gave you. These are some photos. This is the first picture, the first full coat of the exterior, just so you can see the progress. I know most everyone drives by it probably at least once a day that they've seen it. You can see the gray epoxy at the edge of the knuckle of the roof. That's the first coat, and we're putting the second coat of white on. It's all entirely hand-rolled. There's no spraying. We completely redid the landing area, second picture, because the metal is just too far gone, so we completely replated, replaced the ladder section, the upper railing, and the, as we replaced the manway, the hatch to the tank, and new plating to walk on. So you can see the third picture is the finished side. That's the backside of the tank that was finished first. So it's finished. That's what your tank looks like, and will look like hopefully for the next 15 years. Then we get to the beam issues themselves. You can see that's the beam. It's blasted to near white, but you can see the holes that have gone through it, making it structurally unsound. So in good faith and in good conscience, we cannot leave the beams and just cope with them. They need to be repaired, or your tank is in danger of the roof falling in at some point. And you can go through those different, different pictures of different beams throughout, and then the sidewall.
Was this not considered during the original inspection?
We could not, we could not see the damage at that time, sir. We could not see, because of the amount of rust and buildup on the tank through a visual inspection, it's called a latent defect. We couldn't see it. I mean...
Were you the one that presented here? I don't remember.
Yes, yes, sir, I was.
I remember asking that question because you were doing an inspection, and under the inspection, that was specifically, was there going to be any additional cause? And if I remember correctly, the answer was no.
No, well, there shouldn't have been. I was wrong. I mean...
And now you're coming back and saying it's going to cost us $116,000 more for that one tank?
Yes, sir.
So if it happens to the other tanks, it could potentially other change orders?
We've, your two other tanks, your 42 and your 77,000 gallons are finished. We've already finished working on those. They're back in service and they're finished, and the Hidalgo paint tank, we've already seam sealed, seam welded, replaced the interior overflow, which wasn't listed before, welded the holes, and pit filled everything. And you would never know that because that's just something we did because it needed to be done. This, they feel is over, over an extreme. We could not see those damages. We could not see the length of buildup of steel and calcium and corrosion on the tank beams. You couldn't tell that they were going to blast apart as soon as you put a blast hose to them. Or we would have included in the price then if we'd have known that.
So when you did the inspection, I guess it was just a preliminary inspection? It was not a thorough inspection?
It was a thorough visual inspection, but with the cameras and the photos we took, that's what we could see, and we couldn't tell the condition of underlying the rust. So the rust and the corrosion and the dirt on top of the beams, when you're looking at them, they were solid. There were no holes in them. I could not see that there are any holes. Upon sandblasting them, you can see that there are holes. We've, once we've knocked the rust off, knocked the corrosion off, then the metal is gone. And that's from 30 years of not being painted. And I know this board had nothing to do with that, and the city manager and Mr. Cruz has stepped forward, and you guys have stepped forward to get this taken care of, and that's what we're trying to do.
Right. I mean, by all means, that's what we'd want to do, but at the same time, if I remember again, having that conversation and having a contract on some of those terms, if I remember correctly, which goes back to that question because, of course, the change orders, $116,000 is a considerable amount, and to go from, going back to the contract, I'm assuming, Mr. Villarreal, you already looked at, seen the contract and what it says and a change of order?
Yeah, I'm looking at the contract now, and I know item 13, a visual inspection disclaimer. I know he mentions, of course, they're not responsible for things that visually cannot, you know, see at that time. So obviously, when they, obviously discovered the problem, I mean, obviously, but has the issue already been resolved, or are you all asking for permission to address?
We're asking permission to go ahead because it's going to cost us, you know, $200,000, $300,000, all told, next to this. We basically like the city to pay $125,000 for the beams that we're going to replace and the side pins. I said, we, our cost so far, above and beyond what we, we proposed, what we thought it would cost us, we've already spent $116,000 more in doing that ourselves, and we've absorbed that loss. We're not asking the city for that. It's for the pay for the metal, for the new beams, so your roof will stay in place. There's unfortunately no easy, easy way to fix this except for cut the beams and weld them all new in.
So what's the proposal, to pay half up front, then finance the other half during, for the next five years?
Yes, sir.
What was the total cost of the contract, Mr. Perez, do you recall?
It was 1.3...
Mr. Cruz?
1.3.
1.3?
Yes, sir.
And that included all tanks in the city?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned that you already completed two tanks?
The stand pipe and the small GST at the pump station, the work, the metal repair that we're going to do this year is complete. The Hidalgo tank has been sandblasted. We have replaced, which we did not, could not see before because it was filled with water, but we've replaced the inner overflow tube because once we started sandblasting, it basically blew it apart. We replaced and we seam welded and pit filled the base of that, seam welded the riser to repair, and repaired the holes that sandblasted blew in the side of the tank.
Hidalgo tank, which one is that, Mr. Cruz?
Pardon?
Hidalgo, which one is that Hidalgo tank?
The Hidalgo's.
The one right behind the...
Behind his house.
Behind your house.
That's on the hill.
That's the one by the marbles, is that right?
Yeah.
It's on Hidalgo and, Hidalgo and East.
It's the one that will have the red top on it again when we're finished.
It's going to be painted as well. And those, also to add to that, those were also under violation with TCQ, so that's part of the, the agreement that we had with this contract, is those are going to be your fault, in constant contact with TCQ to make sure that all violations that we have are being addressed while they're doing the work as well, too, so.
Once this work is done, it'll be inspected, cleaned out every three years, re-inspected dry, so we will catch anything that is happening at that time, as explained before. Coming in, the situation we were in, taking photos, looking at them on a computer screen, much as I showed here, you couldn't see there were holes in the beams, holes in the floor. Your floor had eight inches of rust deposit and silt and dirt on it that had to be cleaned out. So we didn't know of the holes in the floor, the pitting, and then once we sandblasted, you start sandblasting the sidewalls, and you blow holes through them with a sandblaster, you have to come back in and fix those on both sides, re-weld, re-sandblast, and repaint. So there were charges that were not charged, because we simply, this is our situation, and we're going to fix it. Just the ownership of the company and operations at the time of replacing the beams is something that we can't absorb ourselves, all of it. We want to absorb part of it. We are, we request a change order for the city to absorb the rest.
And when you say part of it, what's your part in this?
About $100,000 worth of paint, sandblasting, time, labor, shipment, the metal. The metal is basically what you're paying for.
Villarreal, anything?
Well, my concern is this. And I do remember them saying that they had visually inspected it. They, they talked about their experience, so the question becomes, is this something that they should have known at the time that they inspected, based on the experience of other similar work they'd done in other entities or with other tanks? So I'm, I'm, I'm going to be, I understand they're, they're, they're looking at paragraph 13?
Yes.
A visual inspection, but I can go back and I'll try to get the, the presentation they did because I do clearly remember that they, there was an indication they had inspected them, visually inspected them, and then they talked about their experience. So the question is, is that something that they knew or should have known based on their experience, and when they see beams like this, they would have found holes after they'd sandblasted them? So that's an issue that I will have. You have an option, obviously. You can change the order as long as it's within the 25%, the Texas local government code allows you to do that. You can negotiate, or you can dispute. But I personally, as council, I would want to review the actual presentation and see because I do remember clearly that, that they said, we've inspected them, that's why we're giving you this, this quote, and then they talked about their experience. So based on experience and prior beams, similar to what they had already seen, you know, should they have known that these beams were defected the way they are? And, I mean, again, it's the commission, but I, I, I do have that question, you know?
May I address that question, please? Hello, my name is Jack Powell. I'm the Southern Manager of Maguire Iron. I cover the states of Texas, Louisiana, Mississippi, Arkansas, Oklahoma, and Illinois. And to answer that question...
Well, first of all, you do remember that you came in and you talked extensively about the experience you all had, didn't you all?
And I was not here at the presentation, okay? And I'm going to assume that, you know, we did.
Okay, then the other thing is, based on, this is the work you all do with fixed tanks.
Yes, sir.
And then I understood very clearly that you all had physically inspected them. I mean, I, I clearly remember listening and hearing whoever did the presentation, so we, we did an eye view of them, and, I mean, in any kind of work, whether you're a mechanic, a doctor, whatever profession you're in, based on experience, when you see something, I'm sure that you know or should know what's underneath once you start sandblasting. I mean, I'm not an expert at this, but, I mean, the issue is, you gave the commission a quote, seeing those rusted beams, knowing, based on your experience, that once you sandblast, the chances of those beams being whole that they're shown here were high probability. And, and I'm sure, I mean, the commission should have at least been placed on some kind of notice and said, look, there might be this expense once we sandblast, based on our experience, when we've sandblasted other beams like this, this is what happened. So we're warning you that once we do that, there's a possibility here on this particular tank. And that's all I'm saying, because to come now and say, now we have emptied the tanks and visually inspected them, and this is what we have found out, then this might be the first job you do then. I mean, that's my concern because I remember clearly, and I'll go back and find those presentations you all did, that that's my concern as, as council for the commission, is that you knew or should have known that that was underneath that rust.
Okay, if I may.
Go ahead.
Just to give you a little bit of my experience, I've been in the tank industry for 12 years. My father was in the tank industry. I'm a NACE certified coatings inspector. I've climbed hundreds of tanks in my career. I've looked at structures, different styles tanks, different style tanks and so forth. Considering the situation, one of the things that we want to do is when we do propose repairs like this, we would, we want to come in with the most competitive price that we can, so we're not overcharging the city based upon assumptions that we do not know. There is absolutely no way, in my experience, in my 12 years of experience, that we would have known that those beams were in the condition they were post-sandblast or abrasive blast. And that's one of the reasons why we do include that visual disclaimer within our proposal. Considering that, we, you know, we've taken on a great deal of liability as well within this contract. We're going to complete probably well over $500,000 worth of work in the first year. We have, to date, not invoiced the city a single penny because we do that after the work's complete, and we've also stretched out the payment of that work over a number of years so that we could make it more financially viable for the city. I believe that we've shown, I guess, in our, on our side, and to answer your question, we have done everything that we, we could have to not only take on the liability that's associated with this, but to make it affordable for the city. Unfortunately, this is an unfortunate situation. Had we known ahead of time, we would have made the contract, you know, obviously, much larger. We would have probably added an additional $300,000 to the contract. We feel that we have taken on our share of that liability, the unknown, you know, unforeseen circumstance, by eating, you know, approximately a little over $116,000 worth of work that we've already performed. I can understand your frustration, but in the same respect, the only way that we would have been able to assess those is to actually cut a hole in the tank, bring in a lift, and rig it, do extensive steel testing on that, which probably would have added another $25,000 to $35,000 to the overall.
My question was, knew or should have known. So what you're telling us, under the 12 years' experience that you've had, you have never encountered this problem. We can go back and look at all your contracts with every, with every entity?
Well, you may, and I've encountered it once in 12 years.
Only once?
Once.
So you've only come back once to an entity?
In my experience, yes.
And your company's experience?
Well, my company's experience, no, I can't speak to that. I don't have enough information.
You spoke on behalf of your company.
Well, no, I'm speaking on behalf of my company right now, and I can only speak on my own experience.
Moving on, if no one objects, if we can go ahead and take this item also, considering the executive session. Objection? I want to thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Executive session, considering the contract. Next item in order is item seven, executive session, chapter 551, Texas Government Code, section 551.071, consultation with attorney, and section 551.087, economic development matters. It is 651 PM. Okay, we're going to reconvene item A to the 7:38 PM. Reconvene into regular session in consideration of action on matters discussed during executive session, including the following. Item A, there was no action on item A. Is, okay, we have item 8B.
And you can also include item 6A together with that one, the one that you took out of order?
Okay, yes, item, which would be 6. 6B.
I'm sorry, it should be 6A, Douglas Clark?
Douglas Clark is 6A.
And 6B as well?
6B is the Maguire.
Correct, yeah, personally.
Okay, so we have item 6A.
Correct. You left that one.
6B. With 8.
Okay, so come back to item 6A, discussion and possible action to award contract Douglas Clark, 1522 16th Street, Enberg, Texas, 7539, for the creation of the General Sanchez sculpture.
Mayor, I here make a motion to approve the Douglas Clark agreement, subject to including the completion date to be 12 months from the execution date of the contract.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Ramirez. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, it was item 6B, discussion and possible action to approve change order. Next, it was item 6B, discussion and possible action to approve change order on McGuire Iron Inc. contract.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve this change order as discussed in executive session and authorize the city manager to work out the details on the payment.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Ramirez. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is item, okay, we said 8A, there's no action. Item 8B, okay, there was...
We're taking it in conjunction with 6.
In conjunction, right, with 6A.
8.
8. And then item 8C. There was no action on item 8C. Did I miss anything else? No? This time, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Ramirez, second by Commissioner Jones. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned at 7:20.